We have to like.
Yeah, open.
It is six oh seven and I call the city council work session in January. Walk off, please.
Councilor.
Here.
Councilor with council, Councilor of the land.
Here.
Council of the bench.
Here.
Council of the Congress here, Council of the first.
Here.
And mayor.
Yeah. All right, we are here to be trained and to help us understand how to do our jobs appropriately and not get into trouble.
Excellent. So, thank you for your time. Uh, I believe your city administrator sent out a rather lengthy memo that we prepared on training, which keep that as a resource. Don't ex- I don't expect you to have that committed to memory or anything. Um, but the slideshow that we'll be talking through today roughly follows that memo if you want to follow along. Um, and they should be consistent with each other, with anybody. Uh, I'm gonna start off and then Ellie's gonna take over at the end regarding openings and open records. But I'll kick us off here with maybe. There we go. Okay, we'll talk about forms of government, the form of government for the city, um legislative decisions, potential decisions. Um, and then, as I mentioned, open meetings, exact sessions and open meetings. As we go, please feel free to ask questions. It's gonna make it much more interesting than us talking at you. Um, and you'll probably get more out of it too. And those of you who've been around, you might know some of this stuff. You might know all of this stuff. So, um, if you have comments to share, feel free. The, well, there's a statutory city, um, as you know, probably. And statutory cities don't always have city administrators, but uh, your municipal code has created the position. And there's a whole chapter in the municipal code about your city administrator's duties. Which we'll talk about in detail in a minute, but before that, I just wanted to kind of go through the Title Thirty-One of Colorado Revised Statutes. That's where the city and other statutory municipalities get their authority in the state of Colorado. Uh, and Title Thirty-One grants the city, um, broad authority over administrative things, financial things, police powers, that's a really important one, um, that we'll, we'll rely on quite a bit. Of the authority to regulate businesses, uh, to adopt building fire codes and enforce those. And uh, to have a planning zoning commission. And control land use in that manner. So even, even though you're statutory, and I, I think in some cases, people feel like that's lesser than home rule, but you do have the full authority of the municipality. And if you're ever interested in talking about them. Um, so as a statutory city, and, and every municipality in Colorado, you're subject to a couple, couple, three really big important laws, Colorado Open Meetings Law, um, the Open Records Act, and the Colorado Code of Ethics. That was on those, other than meetings and records a little bit later. But the Code of Ethics applies to all elected and appointed officials in the state. Um, and we can certainly discuss that if needed. I'm not sure it will come up because, but in any case, so the, um, the key, the key point here, I think, is that if you're operating within your grant of authority, your statutory grant of authority, and then also your specific authority as a council member. Because you're for, you're performing essentially a public function, you're protected. It's immunity, um, there's two types of immunity at play here. The city's immunity, which is protected under Colorado Governmental Immunity Act. And also your individual liability as, or individual immunity as elected officials. So as long as both are acting within the scope of what they're supposed to be doing, you'll be protected. Uh, when things get iffy and we need to be concerned about personal liability or city liability is when the city or individuals are acting outside of the scope of what the law contemplates them doing. So our job is to keep you within the, what the law contemplates you doing. Uh, and then you can take a good bit of comfort in that, that when you're acting in your official capacity, you are protected. Uh, and I believe Sam, um, like, Light is coming from Sursa, he'll, he'll probably focus more on that than, than Abel tonight, but Sursa, as your insurance provider, is very interested in making sure the city acts within its scope and authority so that it doesn't create any liability. Let's hop back to city administrator duties. As I mentioned, it's created, um, in Chapter Two Point Five Six of the code. The position is created. And this distinguishes Leadville a little bit from other, uh, statutory cities. And it, you, you always function more like, um, a lot of home rules that have a, a mayor, a city manager form of government. In that the code has kind of carved out the administrative functions of the city and then said, here's city administrator, do these things. Uh, which frees up city council to focus on legislative, uh, and quasi judicial actions, bigger policy decisions. Um, the running of the city is in Lori's capable hands and you're free to be, uh, kind of do the picture. If you came on before this transition, I think it's a pretty recent transition, right Lori?
Right, about two years.
Yeah, so if you served previously, um, before the city administrator position, you may have a very different perspective on how things run. Um, and I think that's certainly valid. Just keep in mind, the form of government has changed. Um, so now, um, personnel matters and any concerns you have about department heads or the way departments are run, need to go to your city administrator. And that could be, uh, an instance where if you're not used to that form of government, you would potentially be stepping outside your role as a city council member. If you do get involved in how a department is running, where you try to, um, control or direct the employees' work, so just keep that in mind. Any questions at this point?
Can I ask just a, a question? Cause I, you know, I think Lori and I have identified, like, it's super important for us to have sort of the same message to people, cause people do, like, from staff will come to Lori, or they'll come to me, even though I'm not anymore their manager, right? It's just Lori. However, in our code, our code still says, has the city administrative position, but our code still identifies the mayor as being in charge of the departments, and so there's a conflict there.
Yeah, it says that.
No, uh, it says, I report to you, and the departments report to me.
Yes. That, that does say that in yours, but like, in our, like, what are the duties of the mayor? It still has stuff in it from like the old days, like, we didn't change that. And so.
We might need to clean that up.
And so my, my question is, like, I mentioned that to Greg, and he's like, oh, we'd have to take it to a vote of the people, and I was like, uh.
No, you know, I don't.
But I, I guess one of my concerns is, um, is, is making sure that that is sort of a unified thing, cause we're trying to have a, hey, I'm not, I'm not the boss, she's the boss, I'll absolutely listen to you, but then I'm gonna go talk to Lori, you know, and, and I just.
Yeah, we'll check that.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, the, so the three positions of city council directly controls, well, appointed, are the municipal judges, the city attorney, and the city administrator. Um, and then everyone else with more salary. So we'll make sure, we'll, we'll take a look at the code and make sure there's not any inconsistency. And if there is, it would really, it would be ordinance change, so not huge.
Okay.
And one of the things that Mayor Green and I had talked about, because we sort of found this is, is the case, is sometimes, uh, you know, an employee will come to me and the mayor, and we wanna make sure that we're getting the same answer, because you all have heard the public saying, well, we went to city hall three times, and we got three different answers. May have been they went to three different people, so we're trying to make sure we're on the same page. So if, if there's something that's coming up, I, we meet theoretically every Monday, but we're trying to make sure we're on the same page, so if there's an answer that I've given, or an interpretation that I've given, she knows the interpretation, so if the employee doesn't like that answer, and they go to her, she'll say, well, you know, this is the interpretation. You know, if we agree on it, if there's a difference of interpretation, we can certainly talk about it, but that way employees aren't going to different people and getting different answers.
So with the administrative functions, uh, squarely handled, having your city administrator, you are free to make legislative decisions and quasi judicial decisions. There are a few probably administrative tasks that still come to city council, but we won't talk about those now. And it's also possible that you're acting in a ministerial function that comes up too, but primarily, you're gonna be working in these two realms of legislative and quasi judicial, so.
What is ministerial?
Ministerial is, think of, it, it comes from, it's derived from the word minister, so what a minister would do, and not in a religious sense, but like a minister of the government, sort of a ceremonial role. So if you pass a resolution, making a proclamation or something like that, that's probably ministerial. It's, yeah.
Sure, thing goes.
Yeah, and that's probably administrator. Or, or they could fit. Yeah, yeah.
Just wait till we get to social, I like.
They don't have to worry about that one. We, um, so legislative decisions are, I would say, go out on a limb and say, this is probably what you do most often. So city councils legislate, governing bodies legislate, and when you adopt ordinances that are codified, um, those are legislative, and the reason I'm making that distinction is sometimes you'll pass ordinances that are quasi judicial, but we can talk about that in the classification section. So legislative decisions are generally applicable. It's you as a governing body kind of looking forward prospectively, saying, what does the city need? What are the policies we need to adopt? Uh, anticipating things for your constituents. Um, and they're not, these actions are not specific to an individual applicant. Uh, all your money stuff, adopting the budget, um, planning for how city spending needs to work, that's legislative. As I said, general ordinances. So if we're amending the code, for instance, to clean up references to the mayor, uh, that's a legislative action. And one of the important distinctions in legislative acts is that you are sort of the ultimate authority for the city in this manner. Um, if any of your legislative acts were to, if a citizen or anyone else were to seek review of those acts, the judicial branch is gonna take a pretty hands-off role because of the separation of powers idea, so you're the boss of legislation, uh, if your legislation is ever reviewed or challenged, it's only reviewed or challenged on really big things like constitutionality or, um, what else can we go? Probably constitutionality. But even then, if a court's reviewing it, it's gonna be deferential to you as the policymakers. Um, and it's not going to substitute the court's judgment for your judgment, your re-elected officials. This is your realm. And that's in contrast to quasi judicial acts and decisions, um, which most often will come to you following the recommendation of a zoning commission. So these are going to be specific to an applicant and a piece of property. You are deciding, um, things that impact their, their private property, um, and you're sitting in the role of judge or judiciary when you act in a quasi judicial capacity. This means that in, in essence, you're a lower court. Um, and if you're appealed or challenged, the district court, the next court, uh, um, is reviewing your decision, just like you were judges. So, um, judges will judge you as judges more harshly than they will judge you as legislators. They, they consider that their duty. So when you're acting in the quasi judicial capacity, we have certain additional procedural protections that we wanna ensure happen. We wanna make sure there's a really clear record, um, supporting your decisions. And we wanna make sure, um, that you as city council just kind of have a heightened sense of what you're doing when you're acting in this capacity, because you are impacting some of these rights. So there are a few things that come up consistently in quasi judicial actions. And that reference to CRC P One O Six, that is the mechanism by which, um, one of your decisions could be challenged and brought to the district court. They're for short, kind of known as One O Six Actions. So anytime you're doing something that could potentially be reviewed and challenged under One O Six, we wanna be extra careful about process, too fast, and if you think of the city council as judge and jury, essentially, when it's acting in this capacity, there are some rules that apply, um, in particular, ex parte context. So that is a, that is a so you don't wanna be making ex parte contacts. And ex parte, um, is Latin, and it means sort of outside of the party. I don't know exactly what it means literally, but the context is that you're the court in the courtroom, and everything that you're considering should happen in the court, in the courtroom, in front of the public where a record is being kept. You don't have sidebar conversations with the applicant before the meeting. We don't bump into somebody in the grocery store and have them say, hey, so, you know, my fence is in violation, the municipal code, you know, so, um, just be really clear that this is a proceeding, and when you're in an ex parte, when you're in a quasi judicial proceeding, everything needs to happen in this room on the record. And I'm gonna pause there, we talk a lot about the record. Um, so the record is really important in, in One O Six Actions, and it actually becomes a physical thing, it might be digital, but and it is compiled, and that is the only thing that the court reviews related to the proceeding, so if a land use decision, for instance, were appealed to the district court, the district court would ask the city to compile everything that it did about this land use application. It, and that should be limited to city council meetings, um, agendas, staff reports, uh, public comments, and all of that gets funneled up to the court, and that's how the court determines whether the city acted appropriately. Um, so when you refer to the record, that's, that's what that means. And the record really only matters in quasi judicial stuff, but there are other ways records matter, such as open meetings and open records and the city clerk's functions, but we won't get into that. I'm talking about a judicial record. So no ex parte contacts, contacts, and if you have personal knowledge of things that aren't presented in an application, uh, which happens a lot in land use in a city that you know, that you live in, um, it's important that if you're gonna rely on that knowledge, of that you bring that to the proceeding by making a, a statement on the record that says, yeah, I remember when that building was a fire station, and you know, whatever it is you're gonna rely on that is in your personal knowledge that may not be presented officially, it, it's very helpful to, for you to verbalize that and make it part of the record, and really can be part of what everyone is considering for the decision. It's not just something that's living in your head and perhaps affecting the outcome of what you're deciding.
So when we're in the situation and it's stated, if we've had any ex parte communication with, uh, the applicant, is that the appropriate time to make those comments that you're relying on, regardless if it was from the applicant or not, or?
So those are two, I'd say we're kind of blending two things. Yes, if you had ex parte, ex parte contacts, disclose those.
Yeah.
And make them part of the record. But also, if you have personal knowledge of an application, I don't know that there's a prompt in your sess for disclosing that, but we can certainly build one in.
I don't think there is.
Yeah, it, it could be part of just your deliberations.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, is i- if it becomes part of the deliberation.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and chances are, if you're gonna rely on it and use it and as a basis for your decision, it should come up in deliberation. I mean, that's the proper way to do it. Of what I would not want is for somebody to say, you know, and during deliberation, deliberation as well. You know, well, I already decided I don't, I don't like this application, and, you know, I have my reasons, and you know, that, that would be like, no, no, so opposite of that is good. Share your thoughts, have a robust discussion on the record, um, explain your reasoning.
So that also goes to prejudgment, right?
Mm-hmm.
So what we haven't really gotten to yet is the prejudgment portion, so if you're coming in with those outside opinions that would go into maybe whether or not you prejudged the application that you're, that we have.
Yeah, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Would that be on your deliberation as well?
Yes.
Something we disclose.
This was a fire department, and I really don't want it to change its appearance, like, is that?
Potentially, but then, but then the and is. And I'm hearing the evidence tonight, and I'm considering this application on its merits, and I'm open-minded. So it can all be part of the mix, um, if.
So the, uh, there's a, like, the example I was trying to think of is, is, you know, if we had a tree removal, this is a simplified case of a tree removal. And the criteria for authorizing tree removal is the tree is diseased, that can be, and you come in and you say, I don't care if the tree is diseased or not, I love trees, I'm not going to authorize removal of this. That's prejudging, because what you're saying is, it doesn't matter what evidence someone comes forward with, if, even if it meets the criteria, I'm not going to change my mind, and that's what we get in trouble for.
Right, and then you're not applying the standards that the code requires, and then you're not acting appropriately for your position, and that's when you can get in trouble. So, and that's an important point, when you are applying specific standards to a decision, it's important to do so. So you'll, you'll see often, if it's a recommendation from planning commission, that the staff report and the planning commission will have gone through the applicable, applicable criteria in the code, and you'll have information about whether this application meets the criteria or not. So your job is to apply those criteria and make a decision. You are bound to apply those criteria. If you don't, and if you say, like, in Lori's example, you know, no, I don't care what the code says, I, I'm pro-tree, always pro-tree, then arguably you're not doing your job, you're, you're acting beyond the scope of your position as an elected official. Where you swore that you were gonna uphold the ordinances of the city of Leadville, so uh, you do lose a little bit of your personal autonomy, I guess, as you become a city council member, when you take on this role. Uh, and you have opportunities to express it in other ways, but when you're in a quasi judicial process, that is not your time. Uh, when you're legislating, absolutely, bring your agendas, bring your personal thoughts, shape policy.
What about in the case where we know what code is, and it, it, I think you put it very nicely, saying that some of our code is historic, maybe doesn't really fit what the needs of Leadville are, so if we are in a quasi judicial position, and we see like, yes, here's the code, but we also see that the evidence, like, that just doesn't feel right. And so the code says we have to do this, but we really think that what this person is seeking fits Leadville better, can we say it is our intent to change code because it doesn't fit, and so we're gonna grant this with the understanding that our intent is to take this next step? But we can't do that within the quasi judicial proceedings.
The best course of action is to apply the existing standards and flag it for changes. So in your application of the code, if you realize things are out of step with where the city is now, then take note of that and schedule it for discussion and updates. You can't on the fly update according to your desires because you lack a basis in the code for doing so, there's a risk that it becomes arbitrary. There's a risk that you're favoring one applicant over another. I'm, I'm sure none of these things would be your intent, but really, when you're in this quasi judicial role, you kind of have to just stay in the straight and narrow, apply the code as written, um, and yeah, and then talk to Lori about scheduling for an update.
Apply the code as written, and then change the code if you choose to, but apply the code as written.
Right. Can we, can we put that in, the quasi judicial thing, is like, this is something that, you know, doesn't feel right, we're gonna flag it for review, but right now, we're
For sure.
Yeah, absolutely. That is part of our decision.
As part of, what you say, doing that, because you're, you're referring to a specific situation, and, and, and actually, we have heartburn over that specific situation.
Good, good. We absolutely should.
Yeah, because what Hillary's trying to say is, you, you can't choose to not follow the code. And if you do, you run the risk that you will get sued by someone who says you didn't follow the code, and if you didn't follow the code, you really, you can say, well, we intend to change it, we want to, but it isn't, it isn't done. And so you can't apply, apply a non-existing code to applicants, and so that's why we would recommend, you know, if you want to change the code in the future, it's like you run a stop sign, and you, if someone pulls you over, and you're like, well, city intends to pull that out far. But it's still there today, you're still gonna get the ticket today. So I think that what we're trying to use is this is a learning lesson going forward, that it's, that's probably not the best practice.
And we are, as council, opening ourselves up to jeopardy if we decide to ignore them.
But also that specific case, there was an interpretation of something that was not in code, but that was general practice of not doing something on a spot basis.
And that was the first part of it.
Yeah.
But it was a slippery slope after that. Doing anything on a spot basis is favoritization, and that's very dangerous. Yeah.
Yeah, I still think. I get your heartburn.
And I would say, as you get, some of you I know are, have been in this role and are comfortable in this role, but eh, for the new people, as you get your bearings, um, and become more familiar and comfortable, you will probably see policy type of things that you feel need to be updated and revised. And as a body, you can certainly prioritize which ones of those you wanna take on first. But that's really the best way to catch up with, when you feel like things are out of step, and if you have, you know, eh, you, you can walk through the code sequentially, the way you like and don't like, um, and it's probably most relevant is gonna be looking at land use stuff. Making sure your big planning documents are up to date, um, relying on your professional staff. Chaitman's great, he can assist in getting these big, sort of big picture, uh, planning documents in place, and then applying the adopted standards according to those becomes easier and easier. Uh, as Ellie mentioned, I'm gonna circle back to this slide, but as Ellie mentioned, prejudgment is also a no-no, um, you wouldn't want to, this is an extreme example, but you wouldn't wanna, you know, face trial for a crime and have the judge say, well, good to see you today, I, I'm really not interested in anything you have to say, I've already made up my mind, this is gonna point out. So your, your appearance as judges is important, and to appear open-minded and to be open-minded, and to consider the evidence that's put before you, and to consider the standard in a good faith manner is very important. The last thing up there, arbitrary or capricious, yeah, this goes back to the standard that, that the judge, if there is a One O Six Action, will apply. So the city's decision and your decision will be upheld as long as there's evidence in the record supporting it, um. It can potentially be overturned if a judge finds it arbitrary and capricious, and as those words mean, it, it's arbitrary and capricious if you don't have a basis for making the decision. So that's the risk of sort of making decisions on the fly, not applying adopted standards. Nobody likes to be overturned.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, I don't know, it, it, should we talk about sort of the public clamor part of it, is that it is, you know, when we're looking at decisions and being able to uphold a decision that the city council's made, if you can point to that you have the code laid out for you, you've analyzed the facts of this particular situation, and in this circumstance, it's your opinion that this meets the code, or whatever your outcome is, it shouldn't be, we should never have someone say, well, there were thirty people here who wanted this to happen. Public clamor is not part of the consideration, so while you do get people coming from the public, what you wanna hear from them is something that has evidentiary value that may change your mind. So if someone comes and says, well, I know that there isn't a traffic problem on the street, or there is a traffic problem, that's helpful. It's not helpful for someone to come and just say, I don't like this, I don't want it, and you're like, oh, well, there were twenty people who liked it and twenty. oh, well, there were twenty people who liked it and twenty five people who didn't. That's, it's not public clamor. It's your analysis of the evidence that's presented to you. And the most helpful evidence are people who come forth and say, I have factual information that would help you make your decision. And sometimes you get conflicting factual information. So then you'd have to figure out what you believe. And if you believe and you're interpreting, you're saying, I've heard everybody here today and it seems to me there isn't a traffic problem. You're entitled to that conclusion. And then you apply that to the code and say, therefore this is what I think.
Right. But it.
But it's not just twenty five people came and opposed it and thirty people came and.
That's a popularity contest and that's a problem.
But I mean, but I think, I mean, I don't know why we have public comment then, because like in that particular case, yes, there were some clamors people, but there was also I thought applicable and important information coming. That was that was, you know, it was informative and influential in terms of decision.
So typically the, in a quasi judicial setting, there's a limited scope of people who have standing to, I don't want to overdo the old terms, but the, the people who have the biggest voice are going to be the ones who have been identified as as being impacted the most by the decision. So like in land use instances, the neighbors will get noticed and they'll be invited to attend. And so those people are considered to have sort of particular, particularized information about the decision. The city would never. I don't think should ever, uh, for first amendment reasons, um. Tell somebody you don't want to hear what they have to say, but you're going to have to ask city council members. Be comfortable kind of siphoning through that information and determining what of it is applicable to the decision. And what of it is the, the, but I, I don't want to minimize it because it's somebody being involved in their city and feeling passionately about it. And you certainly don't want to discourage that, but you have to have the discerning ear to know whether or not, um, they're.
Whether it's relevant.
Yeah, I'd say that, yeah.
Uh, helpful. Like, so if someone comes in and says, I don't like it. That's, they can come and say that, but is that helpful to you to make a decision?
Right.
Maybe not so much. If someone comes in and says, I live in that neighborhood. Here's what I've observed and this is my observation.
Yeah, I don't like it and this is why I don't like it. It's a different answer than I don't like.
Right. So your job is to sort through what is helpful to you and what is public clamor, which is, I just don't like it.
Good point.
Or I, I love it. Either way.
Seems like maybe in the legislative role, the public clamor would, could carry more weight.
Absolutely.
But we're talking quasi judicial.
Exactly.
Which can be different anyways where.
It's individual versus public. Yes.
Yeah, that's a very good point. So in legislative decision-making, you very much will listen to your constituents. Uh, make decisions based on.
A good word. That's a good word.
Kind of sounds like what it is, doesn't it?
It's also unlikely to be representative.
That's a good point. It, because public climate depends on who has the time to show up to a meeting or has the ability and, but information is what's helpful to you.
And who feels the most passionately about you. Often the people who are most passionate are the ones who show up. The ones who, you know, there might be six people who don't and have a different view, but you don't hear from them. So, yeah. Uh, y- you need to be discerning in your, in your role. Okay, so quasi judicial stuff, we're going to move on, but it's a big thing and you it is kind of a buzzword that I, I think we'll use, um, eh, with you a, as a way to identify things that are before you. You aren't going to have to apply the criteria to say, oh wait, there's an applicant and there was a hearing. We noticed what we applied. This must be quasi judicial. Well, actually just put it out on staff report. Like this is a quasi judicial decision, like heads up guys, like. Yes.
Uh, I have an ex parte question.
Yes.
If now is good.
Yes.
So, um, especially in a small town, sometimes the ex parte just comes right to you. What is the best way to handle that? And at what point would it be like so much that you would recuse yourself or?
So I, I don't think you would, I, I don't want to say never because, but I don't think you would need to recuse yourself for ex parte. Communications and contacts as long as you disclose. The time that we talk about recusal is conflict of interest, which I kind of glossed over, but, um. If you have a conflict of interest or you're afraid you may, or you think you may, please raise that early, like when the agenda comes out or when you know something's going, going to be decided. So we can kind of go through it with you because more often than not, I find that conscientious elected officials feel like there's conflicts more than there actually are. So conflict of interest is going to be pretty narrow, like an actual financial interest in the applicant or, you know, I'm a five percent shareholder in the liquor license that's coming before me, you know, so those are going to be pretty narrow, um. More often it's going to be the ex parte issue where, or prejudgment where you need to bring something to the record, kind of like no, let the sunshine shine on it and it becomes disclosed and it becomes a valid basis for the decision. I suggest with ex parte contact, context, kind of actually like practicing in, out loud, saying out loud, um. What you might say to somebody in the grocery store, um, because if it actually comes out of your lips, you know, before you have to use it, it might be easier, but it can be a really pat answer, like thank you so much for your interest in this matter. I'm going to really encourage you to come to the public hearing. Unfortunately, I can't consider this stuff now. You know, I really need you to comment and speak to the city council as a.
So you can encourage sharing, but you want to encourage sharing on a public basis.
Right.
But what if it comes up in the context of, we just love trees? I mean, is that benign enough that it? It doesn't matter if then it turns out we're saying, we're hearing something about a diseased tree. And we somehow expressed.
Ex parte is going to be limited to the applicant, uh, of specific application.
Okay.
So if somebody is talking to you about a policy matter, you know, take that to heart, um, make that part of how you govern, but.
I, I think Tim's point is a good one. I think somebody may come up to you and be like, hey, good to see you. Glad you're on council. You know, and all of a sudden you find you're talking about trees and you're like, I have no idea why we're talking about trees. You have no clue. And then you see the agenda for the next meeting. You're like, oh, I totally get why that person was talking to me about trees. And so then what I would say you recommend, the recommendation is to say, I ran into this person at the grocery store. I did not know this application was before the city. Here's what happened. And then you just disclose it.
Yeah.
Cause you're not going to know sometimes that this person has.
An agenda.
A, a reason, a reason for talking to you and you're just going to be making polite conversation and then you still see an agenda and they're like, oh.
Exactly happened to me before.
Yep.
My dad's friend, we were talking to him and he's like, oh, we have this parking problem here and a building here and da, da, da. And, and I was like, oh yeah. And he's like, and anyway. I'm coming before you guys, like, I was like, oh shit.
So I think one, if you realize, you can say, at this point, I realize now you have an application. I, I can't, please come to city council. I can't talk to you anymore about this and then just disclose it. Cause you, you're not going to always know.
You're not. And you, and if they don't want to come, you can say, put it in writing, send it by emails to the city.
Yeah, please share your information.
Yeah. Um, I was going to say something related to that. Oh, when you do, if you are disclosing an ex parte contact or, uh, personal knowledge, then there is an important follow-on and that is and I'm going to apply the criteria that are, you know, that are before me and consider the evidence before me. So you want to always kind of add that, that you're not shirking your responsibilities. Half, half the battle is disclosing, but the other half is to say, um, that it's not going to inappropriately affect my decision. Okay. So moving on from that.
Ellie's up.
Okay, meetings. We're in one right now. Um, he's governed by the Colorado Open Meetings Law. Um, meeting is broadly defined, so any gathering convened to discuss public business in person, by phone, electronically or by other means of communication. So all, uh, council meetings are open to the public. Um, they require at least twenty four hours of advance notice, which is why you have your agendas posted on the front door. They're well lined. Um, emails can constitute a meeting. Um. So if there's, you know, a quorum of you on an email chain or if you reply to all on an email chain. If you get your agenda ahead of time and you have questions about it and you hit reply to all, that could constitute a violation of the open meetings law. So we recommend, you know, if you have a question, avoid replying to all, maybe ask Lori directly. She can clarify, um. That's when it can be helpful. Either you can email one of us, email Lori, not having conversations over email outside of an open meeting setting, because those emails haven't been noticed twenty four hours in advance. They're not open to the public, you know, they could be, which we'll talk about under core. They could be, um, disclosed later. Um, it looks like you want to.
I was going to say a text messages had.
Yeah.
Prior situation where I have one councilman not here who would text everyone on the city council and say, okay, I went and visited that site and here's my two cents on this and this is how I'm going to vote. No. And I kept telling him, that's a violation. You can't do that. And so then the text message would come through. Lori's going to be mad at me, but, and then, but so these are the kinds of things that like you, you, these are the kinds of things that, and I finally sent him a newspaper article of, of county commission that got in trouble for that. It was found to violate the open meetings. And I was like, this is the kind of stuff that's a self-inflicted wound. We can easily not do these things, uh, but I, while we may get to this, social gatherings by chance where you show up at the same place are an exception. We don't have to notice those. But you should not talk about council business. So if you show, all show up at the same holiday party and you didn't, you know, we, we now have a quorum there, just it's a social event. That's fine. You just don't discuss council business in your file.
Is that a be aware of perception issue or just don't discuss?
Also been advised.
Right.
Be aware.
Well, it's a perception issue and it's also a potential actual meeting. So meeting is defined in part as discussing public business. So if you show up at a Christmas party, uh, you know, unaware is that a forum is going to be there, but then you talk about items that are coming before you at city council, then you have inappropriately.
What if it's just two people meet and have an issue that they want to talk out? If just two people meet, is that still a potential?
Two is okay. However.
You're no weirdo sticking to.
There's a recent case, um, on sort of the, the court referred to it as daisy chaining where you meet with him and then he meets with him and then he meets with her. And that's kind of done as an end around to get consensus or, you know, kind of share everyone's thoughts. That is improper. Um, but if you want to, you know, confide in somebody and have a conversation about it.
Okay, uh, but once again, be careful of that.
Yeah.
One council member wants to meet with a couple of other council members and just catch us up on the housing authority. This isn't about.
Yeah, posted as a meeting.
Can't do it.
Can't do it.
Can't meet home. There you go.
Can you, um, advise in terms of like group emailing, like not necessarily what, you know, like we need to decide this, but like, here's an article that might be helpful for our future consideration. Like, is that something that say, for example, to me that I should send to Lori and Lori can send to all of us?
Well, you can send it out. You, you certainly, that's an option. Or you can send it out and consider it like a one-way dissemination. Okay.
Not a meeting, as you know.
Yeah, just land it in your inbox, do with it as you wish. Don't reply all, and you may even say that if you send it out, like remember, don't.
I think that the test is whenever you're doing something, think about whether or not it could appear as deliberation. So if you're sending out an article that says, here's, and I've done this to, to all of you, here's an interesting article, a short-term rental.
Yeah, but.
Great. There's no deliberation there. If someone writes and says, oh, well, this is really interesting and this will affect my vote in the upcoming meeting. I hope it affects, okay, now you're saying to deliberation. So one-way communication of scheduling, hi, someone has a conflict, can we reschedule the meeting? And everybody replies, scheduling is okay to discuss. Scheduling meetings is okay. That's the only thing that I would say you should reply to all and everything else is a one-way. Because then you're not deliberating. No one can say you were deliberating behind closed doors about a subject. You, 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 there's no communication back and forth.
So associated with that. Should we keep those emails where you're like, I need to change the schedule. Okay, how about this day? Well, that day doesn't work. What about this day? And you know, and suddenly we get like this long train of emails that's cluttering up everything but has no deliberation in it.
So record retention is, yeah, that's a whole other ball of wax. So I would imagine if it's on your city email, that this, the ID server, the city server is retaining those according to the city's record retention policy. You individually are not required to do so. But we might need to follow up on that and make sure, I, I, I've found a lot of places are great at retaining. But not great at purging. So, um, it may be that good kudos to you if you want to purge, but we might need to talk about what the city in general does with those types of records and how long they exist.
Cause I guess, I mean, that's lately, I'm getting a jillion.
Yeah.
If I get rid of them, I can focus on the ones that actually matter rather than having them.
You're not the custodian of records in the city. You personally are not responsible for curating the city's historic documents.
So those emails are somewhere.
Urge all you want.
Great. Thank you.
Which is good, because I've already put.
They still exist, um, and the city could produce them if needed for a court request, um, which we'll talk about.
You are, yeah, none of you are tasked with making sure you keep all of your.
Right.
That's awesome, because that.
But just remember that every mail you send is saved somewhere.
Right. Complicated, like what has to be saved for what amount of time?
Right.
Yeah.
The exception to that is if you're using personal email addresses other than your city of Lethville.
Here's my advice to you though, is like, yes, scheduling, whatever. Uh, what I would say is for purposes of your own ability to figure out what you did or what you said, it might be helpful for you to save some correspondence. Because we're not going to go to our IT guy and have you say, I sent an email six months ago. I want you to search that. He'll go crazy. So if you're trying to maintain your own records for purposes of your own, like I think I remember that I want to find it. It's probably easier if you save your own records.
On a related note, I, I don't think I have access to my council email yet, but is it acceptable to have that forwarded to our personal email? And manage it through there?
So.
You're opening yourself up to liability if you do that.
Yeah, we're all. Yeah, whoever comes after you will also be made crazy by your merging.
Yeah.
I will just say that.
Yeah.
All experience in the last couple of weeks.
So if you can keep.
You're making crazy.
The inbox separate, possibly. I mean, it's going to depend on your actual sort of tech situation.
It's okay. I don't have to.
Okay.
Just wondering.
But yeah, I mean, better off to segregate, receive and reply for to your city address.
Well, I sent this document to my personal email, so I could print it. Was that an engine?
Or like meeting dates, so I can join the Zoom.
I mean, you've ordered it to your personal email.
Yeah.
I'm thinking more like constituent emails or communication about issues with another council.
People would care about.
Yeah.
It's still an issue if someone call Mexico.
Cause that, to me, I was like, well, surely there would be an issue with me trying to access this Zoom link on my computer that I don't want to log in my email with.
Right.
But need taxes online, you know?
Yeah.
Or the online.
Yeah, no, it's more like emails with content.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Our advice, you know, we provide you with your city council email address so you can conduct that business and keep it separate.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, I think nominal stuff that people might not care about, I think Hillary's advice and Ellie's advice is correct. I wouldn't conduct your business, city council business through your personal accounts, because then your risk of having to have someone sort it through your personal accounts.
Which we'll get to under. The only other thing I'll say about open meetings, uh, that I run into is just keeping minds for before and after portion of our public meetings. So if you're congregating before, congregating after, you know, walking out together, that type of thing, just keep it in mind and whether or not rehashing what just happened at the public meeting, obviously you're all leaving the building probably at the same time. Um, after meetings, but ma- maybe keep it to small talk or you're not rehashing what just went down at the public meeting, because that was all on public record and now the meeting is over and so we're not continuing the meeting and it's not properly noticed, you know, it's already concluded. So nothing in the parking lot, not congregating.
Now, regardless of the open meeting of one-on-ones, like if I have a one-on-one up with someone about something on the agenda, is that fine or?
Typically, yes. Yeah, the one-on-one thing, as long as we're not turning it into like, okay, you two are talking about it, then you know, you're going to talk to someone else about the same thing.
Daisy chain.
Yeah, exactly.
And maybe it's, maybe you're able to meet with staff and get that kind of update rather than another council member, because really you, you're elected to, to do, as you know, um, work. um, work for the public in an open manner, so I just discourage the kind of one on one idea, because it may be a substitute for a debate or a discussion that you could have here. And it's totally fair to say, hey, I wasn't here last time that, you know, in the meeting, formal meeting, hey, I wasn't here last time this was discussed, can you bring me up to speed? No, I would far rather you do that and the meeting take five minutes longer than you on the side meet with somebody, I'm not saying it's improper, it's just, it's not a good practice. Try to, try to get comfortable doing the public's work here.
And the, one of the things is, one on, we have one on one meetings with staff though, where there's questions about, um, you know, like, let's say, a particular council member has a particular subject that they're interested in. And so as long as we don't do what the serial meeting where I meet with one council member and then I go and tell the other council member, the other council member, but it's more of an update where we can say, you know, they'll might say, what's up with the fingerprint machine, things that maybe not necessarily of necess- necessary to bring up at the public meeting.
Yeah.
And so we can cover things.
Absolutely, with staff, I, I agree, um, the one on ones with, you know, a staff member and a city council member, that I have no problem. Yeah.
Any other questions on open meetings?
Talk about the weather.
Within, um, the requirements for open meetings, we have sort of an exception for executive sessions, so executive sessions occur, uh, properly noticed, so they're on the agenda with one of the seven reasons that are, uh, in the call out of the statute, so executive sessions are an exception to an open meeting, but they still fall under the, um, notice requirements for open meetings, so it's not an on the fly decision to have an executive session and executive session within an open meeting, but once you're in the executive session, that's your exception to the open meeting. Um, so let's say you need to receive specific legal advice, so maybe one of us comes in person or I'm on Zoom. Um, there would be a process to, you know, shut down the, um, open portion of the meeting. Um, and typically they're still recorded, but it's not released for, um, public review, so a record will be kept for just in case kind of reason. Um, and so for one, one of the seven reasons, so we're talking about maybe a specific project that's too early to disclose on the record, or what, whatever the reason is within the seven reasons, but if anyone wants to discuss the specific seven reasons, I'm happy to do that, um, as well, but think of an executive session at the time to discuss more sensitive topics. Um, in a proper manner altogether, um, and it's technically still being recorded, but, um, you know, in Zoom is shut off to the public if there are any um, people at the meeting in person or staff members, they're asked to leave the room, and so it's just council. Um.
Private conversation during a public meeting.
Private during public meeting for public business, but you know, for the good of the city, um, for one of the reasons, um, you know, so it can be a conference of city attorney to consider, um, to receive legal advice on a specific legal matter, um, and these seven reasons are in the long memo, um, but personnel matters, um, negotiations or strategies, um, documents protected from disclosure under Cora, which we'll talk about Cora in a second, um, considering purchase, lease, transfer, sale of real property, personal property, other property, um, consider matters required to be kept confidential under state or federal law, or to discuss specialized detail, details of security arrangements or investigations. So those are kind of broad umbrellas, the seven reasons, um, if there's something that you think needs to be discussed in the executive session, um, we would get that onto the agenda ahead of time for one of those reasons, and then, um, Hannah would help, you know, shut down the Zoom, reset up the recording, that's not gonna be released, um, as part of the public meeting, but we still record it in case it does need to be later released, um, under Cora, which probably won't be, but it's still kept, um, close to the public, um, what else I wanna say? Yes, so they're completely confidential, not part of the public record.
The, couple things, the, the exec session has to begin and end in an open meeting, so um, the exec session will conclude and the public meeting, you should visit, e- even if it's only just a feature. Uh, so it kind of has to be bookended that way, and the things discussed in exec session are confidential, um, but i- in addition, any printed material we might receive at, in preparation for the exec session are confidential, and only council as a whole can waive that protection. Um, if an individual decides to release information, um, in violation of the exec session, they're kind of out there on their own, that's not an official decision to waive. Um, and that would be in an appropriate disclosure or confidential.
So, so any executive session is always noticed on the public meeting.
Mm-hmm, for what, for a broader reason, so it won't say, you know, the specific negotiations that you're discussing, but it'll say, you know, the code section negotiation, so generally the public will know, okay, council's thinking or negotiating something, but they're not gonna know the details, cause maybe that will compromise whatever the subject matter is. Um, and no formal action is taken in, in executive session, so they're really for kind of more sensitive discussions. Any action, like the legislative or maybe quasi judicial, whatever the action is, is taken in an open meeting, not in an executive session. Any questions? These are, it's a good tool to have, um, and to know that it's there for you, if you have legal questions, or there's a specific project, or there's a sensitive issue.
How, what's up, how, in terms of starting an executive session, like if a council member, and we're not all in agreement of starting one, but wanted to start an executive session and have that process begin, how would one go about that?
Is it noticed, is it on the agenda, or is this kind of an?
I would assume that it would have to be on the agenda, right?
Yeah, so if it's on the agenda, then it requires a motion and vote, and it just has to be unanimous vote to go into the exec session. Um, if there's a, a no vote, then it just doesn't happen.
Right.
If there's a desire to try to do one on the fly, th- there are times that might be appropriate, maybe for legal advice, but I would really not rely on that.
Okay.
So, if it's something that you anticipate wanting to have a private discussion about, probably mention it to one of us before, you know, before the agenda's out, or even after the agenda's out, but before the meeting, so we can talk about whether it's appropriate to add it.
And, and just so everybody knows, like for the, until, um, council member Edwards comes back too, but as far as agendas, uh, we have a process for setting the agendas, and what we try and do is, uh, we meet the Tuesday before every council meeting to talk about what's gonna be on the agenda. So just keep that in mind, the Tuesday before is when we're trying to try and firm up what's gonna go and what may drop. So if you want something on the agenda, I'm the manager of the agenda, so if you want to add something to the agenda, try and let me know, and then we put it on the agenda, and then, you know, as Hillary said, if the motion fails, it fails, but that's the process for getting something on the agenda.
And some bodies have, um, a process, a more formal process for getting things on the agenda if it's a problem, I, I've seen some divides, divided council decide that it, you know, had, it requires two or three council members to agree before something gets added to the agenda, you don't have those issues, a- and things are zooming along just fine, then not a thing, but if you start getting into those areas, we can talk about ways to manage that. Think, and I would wanna, um, you're managing the agendas now, it's working fine, um, but if you had, say, an individual request by one council member to get something on the agenda, and you weren't sure there was interest in shared interest by the group to discuss that, then you can have that discussion, about whether it gets on or not.
This isn't necessarily an executive session question, but I was at a, a conference and they were talking about the issue of like free speech and sort of that, not necessarily clear line when free speech turns into, you know, like not the content of the speech, but the behavior of the individual's disruptive, and so there is some of the other mayors were kind of throwing in like, in their experience, what they had done, and someone said that sometimes what they'll do is call a recess for legal advice on whether this stopping this person would constitute a violation of free speech or not, it's not really executive.
No.
It's, but in terms of your saying likes a spot or abrupt request for legal advice.
Well, you could call a recess, um, to restore order, it wouldn't have to be for the purposes of legal advice, so, uh,
I think in their case, they were like, they weren't really sure.
Yeah, 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 and if you have disruptive public comment, we can certainly address that by rules of conduct and things like that. But as the, so the mayor, you run the meeting, and if you need to call for a recess or wanna call for a recess, you can use. That, that helps you bring order.
Any other questions about executive sessions?
I wanted to know, one exception, um, there won't be a recording cap, so there's a separate exec session recording in case we ever have to prove that it was a proper exec session, and we talked about what we said we were gonna talk about. Although if it's called for legal advice, I'll advise you to turn off the recording, or LA would. So if the city, the city attorney makes the rec- the representation that it would be legal advice, then there doesn't have to be a record cap.
But as soon as that's over, even in the same executive session, we turn it on, right?
Have you ever had a scenario where you see a city council going down a bad path? Then as the attorney sitting in, you might suggest that legal advice was required.
Um, in meeting?
In other words, would you ever insert yourself?
Insert myself, yeah, I, what I would probably do is ins- insert myself, um, and ask for the matter to be continued rather than ask for an exec session.
Hmm.
Um, just because of the uncertainty about whether there could be a notice issue if you're calling one on, on the fly.
Right.
Um, the better practice in my mind is to take note of what's going on, say, hey, this, you know, in my head, this seems like it's kind of going off the rails here. Um, jump in and say, hey, council, you might need a little more background information on this before you make a decision, can we set this for, you know, the next meeting? And then when you're outside of the meeting, you know, we, I can advise you by memo or however is needed to, to kind of get you back on track or give you the advice I think you need to hear. Yeah, that would be, that would probably be how I.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think it's hard, we, we shouldn't put our city attorney in a position where she has to say, you all are violating the law. So I guess what I would say to you all is if you hear her advising us to continue something, or advising us to look at the code and reference how the facts support the code and your conclusion, that's a key that, you know, we're, we need to follow those rules, and it's not, uh, it, it may be a way of saying, you're treading in water where you might be getting foul, and perhaps you, you know, think about how to phrase that a little bit better, or she says, perhaps maybe you could phrase it like this? I think that's good advice. Or I think what you're saying is that your opinion supports the finding that, like those texts of clues.
Yeah, because it, it, Lori's right, what we don't ever wanna do is interject and say, on the record, you guys are about to make a mistake. So we may just sort of try to find a way to call a timeout, I appreciate that.
Okay, one more.
One more slide?
Um, about open records. So again, this is governed under, um, state statute, um, so the call out, open records up, and here is talk about Cora, open records, that's Cora. Um, so under Cora, um, public records include all writings made, maintained, or kept by a public body that are used by the body to conduct functions pursuant to law, administrative rule, or involving public funds, so basically, everything is a public record, there are limited exceptions, um, for work products, but, um, mostly I would just advise that everything, it could be, um, disclosed under Cora if someone requests it, um, specifically, um, so we've seen very broad Cora requests, we've seen very narrow Cora requests, so, um, a record fits under a Cora request, it needs to be disclosed, um, pursuant to law, so um, and the city also has a Cora policy, which, um, kind of governs, um, its response to Cora requests, and it goes along with the state statute, um, so this includes emails, this could include text messages, um, this could include emails from your personal email, if you, that's why we kind of were discussing keeping things to your city email, um, then you don't have to worry about being the custodian of records necessarily, because the city will have those records, because they need to have them in case someone requests that they be disclosed, um, so if you are corresponding, using your personal email, um, for public matters, um, for your council position, just be wary of that, that, that could be open to public record, um, public request. So that's why we recommend just keeping everything streamlined and under one email, so you don't have to worry about, um, Cora touching your personal email. Um, cause there's no exception, you know, even though you're on city council, but this is set from your personal email, Cora doesn't apply, that's not a thing. So it still would apply if it is a public record under your personal email account.
So personal notes that I'm taking about an issue during a meeting are my own personal notes, but as soon as I scan those and email them to somebody else, that's correspondence, and that's a different story.
I think even your notes are probably open.
Okay.
So we have to be the custodian of our written notes.
Unless you wanna hand them off to the city clerk before you die.
How long do we need to retain them?
I would have to consult the retention schedule.
Yeah, we can look it up real quick, I.
Look, another question is.
From six years ago, that I still have, but.
If it's sitting in the Google Drive, is that fine? Okay, cool.
The only thing I was gonna say about the, um, and I've never seen this council do it, but texting from your phone, uh, during a meeting, it doesn't look good, especially if by accident, there are two people texting on their phone during the same meeting, it can create the appearance that you're corroborating on the vote, I've never ever seen that happen here, but I would just say, picking up your phone and texting, especially if it's a controversial thing, uh, wouldn't advise doing it, wait until the meeting is over, uh, because what you might get is somebody who's unhappy with your decision and decides that they think you were corroborating, and they put in a Cora request. My other thing is, is that, uh, I don't think that would happen here, but just be careful what you put in writing, because there are, you know, obviously, there are, are only a few reasons we can withhold correspondence. And so it, you know, i- if, if somebody writes, well, that, you know, public comment, first thing was certainly unhappy, it's probably cause they're going through an nasty divorce and blah, 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 gossip, 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 like, but, you know, people people sometimes think, you know, I'm sitting at my desk and I'm just writing to my friend, or I'm writing to someone, it's a private conversation, it's, it's not. So just be careful with that, it is, if you're using your, your city council email address, it is correspondence on behalf of the city, and there are very few limitations to what we, even, even if it's embarrassing, I mean, and I haven't, I've read this more when I was in litigation, but I had clients and I would look at their emails and I would cringe, cause you know, it's the gossip. And I did not have a reason to withhold it, and so it was embarrassing, you know, you have, you know, someone having public comments on, or, you know, having comments on someone else and really, I kids, it's so, that's what I ask people think about.
Do you advise, cause I've kind of run into this, like I usually take, have in the past written my notes on that little tablet weird thing I have, um, since now I'm running meetings, it's a lot harder for me to be present and run the meeting and also take notes, and so like the last meeting was a little early, easier for me to just like type in quick things that I could wrap, is that a bad look? I mean, I know it's not, but.
Texting, no, cause then it looks like you're taking notes, I, I think the texting is the issue, is it, cause, uh, I mean, people, you have your city issued laptops, thing that look, you know, if you're taking notes, that's fine, I think when you pick up a phone, it's more people assume that you're communicating with somebody rather than taking notes, that makes sense.
Gonna be like, I can't pick you up, call you back.
I was gonna say, tell my girlfriend I can reply, I'm sorry.
That's right, yeah, it's just, and I, I, it is, it is only because I know other city councils have run into that issue on a controversial. City councils have run into that issue on a controversial vote, you know, you've got. People doing this and it just creates the appearance that people are corroborating and you may not be, you might be like. This meeting is painful, honey, I'm going to be home half an hour later, but it does it to the public. They don't know what you're saying.
What if I say it?
You could say it, of course.
Like what if I'm like, hey, guys.
I I need to let someone know I'm running late.
Okay, cool, so if I do deliberate, but that's fine. Or would, I mean, I guess it's still coral, right?
Yeah, it's still coral, corable if it's discussing public business, so. If it's on your personal device and, I mean, there's a lot of ifs here, but it's on your personal devices, it's truly a personal text. There's probably not, there's probably a basis for reporting. But let's, let's just not be in that position. And if you need to say, hey, mayor, can can we have a five minute recess? I need to catch up at home with what's going on, you know, whatever, so you can step out and text or call. That's fine. Thank you.
Oh, just say, think twice, hit send once. Any issues, um, or just think, would you want that email to show up in someone's request? Would you want it to be published in the newspaper if the newspaper requests it? Um, just keep it in mind. Um, I think that's all we have. I don't understand the question.
I did look up, the co- the the mayor's code is clean. It's changed, I think even since we talked about changing some of the weird, like the salary, some of the weird thing about. Having a city administrator and that would limit it.
Yeah, we did change that part when we updated the mayor's hour, yeah.
Because I remember looking at it and being like, hey, like this can't be right, so I couldn't have been. It looks good to me.
Just a question, since you have your email addresses up there. There really shouldn't be a circumstance where we email you directly rather than going to your lawyer, right?
You can, they, uh, they represent the city, so if you have, I mean. Obviously it's helpful if I know if there's an issue, but if you feel like you need to privately discuss something with them, you're absolutely entitled to do that. If there's just a general question, you know, I, what I, we generally like to do is I review their invoices. So if I see all this stuff, I might be like, no, we didn't do this, so it's kind of easier if I know. Uh, but if you feel as though it needs to be private with them, you're absolutely entitled to do that.
And in representing the city, the city's embodied by city council. Uh, and city administrator, only if those two roles are in conflict, do we need to. Be concerned, but otherwise, yeah. CC Lori so she knows. Um, I would say, i- i- this is kind of similar to the agenda setting. Item I mentioned that is, I've seen some places where they kind of have to come up with a, uh, some sort of limitation on who can. Who can, um, conduct the city attorney because of, because of the bill. Uh, so in some places I've, I've seen there has to be like, you know, it has to be voted on by a majority or. You know, the city attorney can do up to an hour of work for each individual council member and above that they have to get the approval of the group, so. We represent the city, um, not you as individual city council members.
Well, staff members.
Yeah, so that's one thing, we haven't ever had to say that a staff couldn't go directly to our city attorneys. So what I, I think the only issue that I have is if we have. A staff member who is directing the city attorney to do things that are either outside of the scope. Or the city attorney doesn't know that I've already given an answer, or essentially that we're. Monopolizing the city attorney's time and I, and we have a, uh, an abuse issue. We haven't come across that, so I've never said that department heads have to go through me to go to the city attorney. Because we haven't had that issue, if we have a problem where somebody is like, oh, I think I want to, I have this. Random question and I constantly am heading the city attorney with these random questions and we're racking up. Whatever it is, two hundred plus dollars an hour and I'm like, why, we're living, this isn't even an issue we should be working on. If we got into that problem, I would say then department heads need to go through me to go, but. Right now I don't have time and the department heads have been great about just going to the city attorney with true questions. Can you review this liability waiver? I need to have a question about. You know, trespass or something, so, uh, the staff has been great about being cognizant of. You know, wanting to get answers, but also being respectful of your time.
And we have a role to play in that too, if we're getting a lot of. Competing requests from a lot of different department heads, we will need to say, hey, let's prioritize, we need to get kind of a consensus about what we're supposed to be working on first. So we would probably go to Lori for that direction. And then if she needed direction from council, ultimately you would set the sort of the priorities of the city.
But it is okay, like, in cases where it's applicable, of course, for department head to ask faces. Like, that's not an unacceptable thing to do, because. Yeah, cool.
Yeah, and what I would love to do is, is if it is just, if it could be a question of generic application, so. You know, Hillary could CC me on the response, so if someone says, hey. Can I trespass this person from this building and it's the animal shelter and maybe it's applicable to other buildings, maybe it's helpful for the streets department to know that. Hillary and I have a meeting every, um, two weeks on Tuesday and so we go over her priorities. To make sure, like, if we've got an ordinance that's on deck and she says, oh, you know, so and so has been chasing all these random questions. Okay, but what's more important is this, or we have a time deadline for that, so. That's how we kind of keep track of what you're working on and. I've never had an issue with departments abusing attorney's time or asking questions they shouldn't be. So I haven't said you have to go through me because they've been really responsible about it and. Asking, hey, you know, we have this contract, can we send it to Hillary? Absolutely.
It's okay if I ask a question. I know, I remembered in one of our, um, staff meetings that you said we're not allowed to contact the city attorney, so am I?
Oh, no, no, I, no, I said, that's why I actually sent around her con- her new contact information. No, you can go ahead and contact her, I just want to make sure if there's questions that are of general applicability. You know, we know, but I know that like for election stuff, you went, you were. Talking to Hillary about questions about that and so, no, I don't have an issue with going directly, what I wanted to make sure. Is where we were using our prior attorney for a lot of word processing, so please draft this for us. Will you draft the staff report? Will you draft the resolution? We want to focus on you providing us legal advice and not word processing. So that's where, yeah. Because sometimes we'll ask, so, so for example, though, I I guess I want to clarify, a lot of times Hillary's office will have a template. And that's, that's fine, but if they could just as, you could just as, or I could just as easily draft the resolution as they can. May, we should not, you know, be paying our attorneys to draft staff reports.
If that makes sense.
You know, and I think that was the, the niche that Christiana filled for us was that we didn't really have other people to draft staff. Where I've been before, whoever it was bringing the item before the city council drafted. The documentation for, and we very heavily relied on Christiana to write everything for us and. She willingly did it, but it was not a good use of city funds.
So for members of the public want to bring something to us, they would draft.
Or we, like, so for example, um, like, if a, so, you know, those nonprofits came to us and said, we would like to make a funding request. I would say to them, great, I've got a template, I'll draft that for you, you come and present. What I shouldn't do is say to Hillary, can you draft that for me? Because we have templates for that. And if she has, so for example, the, what did we just do recently that you had a template for? Oh, the, what's that?
The appointing.
Right, so if I write to Hillary and say, do you have a template resolution for X, Y, and Z, and she's like, yeah, here you go. I will populate it with the information and get it going, or she can, you know, take a stab at drafting one that's more complicated, but we shouldn't just. Say, you know. Direct, go ahead and just do the word processing for us, that's, um, so.
But that would still be an internal process of the city, like someone within the city would draft that, not some random nonprofit.
Yeah, unless they have one that works.
Uh, yeah, I guess.
I guess that imagine the housing coalition bringing draft something or other.
Like, so for example, like, you know, we've been presented with IGAs that have been signed on by multiple agents and we, we don't rewrite it. As long as it is good enough for us, we will sign onto it, so. Yeah, makes sense.
I have a, just a quick, maybe just flashback to the quasi judicial thing, so in the past. We had been advised, like, if we know, say, a, um, a variance or something is, is going to come before us. That we should not walk by that property and look at it. And that if we want to see it, we should instruct staff to bring us pictures. What's your opinion on that?
I think you can avoid knowing what you know, um, I would say that's a thing where you disclose it on the record.
Like I walked by it.
Yeah, I wa- I took it, I, you know, I took a walk yesterday and looked at the site so I could get an idea of what's going on with it.
But I would say, yeah, absolutely, you know, Hillary's fantastic, when in doubt, you know, I would say if you're, if a question. We want to be, I want to say frugal, but you can come to me first, you know, and and I, if we're stumped. We'll, we'll go to Hillary because I think we want the right answer, but I also feel like if there was an answer, we could have, staff could have provided. That, you you know, we're, we're, we're trying to be good about our fiscal responsibility, so, you know, you can start with us. And, uh, Hillary knows that I will, and Ellie knows I will call them if we need further advice and or interpretations.
The last question I have is more so for you rather than Lori's, but. So, for example, I want to meet with new council members to catch them up for regional housing. I would disclose that with you and give you a time and date that we would do that, and then you would, how would that process go?
It depends on how you want to do it, so I would say if you want to meet with them one on one and it doesn't appear that you're deliberating on anything that's. Pending, if it's an update. Uh, you know, I think that's fine. But if you're going to do multiple people and you're going to have a quorum, then you'd have to notice it.
And quorum is more.
Yes. So, yeah, I mean, you can see, if you look at the board of county commissioners, they sort of, if they think they're all going to show up someplace, they notice everything. So if you look at their planner, they pretty much should notice almost everything that's happening in town. Because then if three of them show up, then they enable.
It was on the calendar, yeah.
They noticed it, yeah, and and. So that's one way to do it, but, but I think if, like, again, the test is, does, are you deliberating on things? If you're, yeah.
And I guess the answer to that, I don't know.
And I would say it's even minor than that because you're going to be talking about public business if you know there's going to be three of you. Posted as a meeting in a, in a, I don't know whether it's through the clerk's office or through city administrator's office, you work to get that meeting posted accordingly. Now even more efficient for you to have one meeting with two people. Than to meet with each one individually, so, uh, there's no prohibition against it as long as it's posted, and I don't know that public would attend.
How do we calculate quorum number?
Quorum is three, well, quorum is majority for council. Um, for open meetings law, it's not quorum, it's three.
Okay, gotcha. So.
Council, you need.
Quorum would be four.
With open meetings, it's three.
Which is why the grocery store is awkward, it's ten and. Greg and I are all standing there in line, barely going.
Yeah, and I think that's the issue in small towns, right, is, is, and also that people want to talk to you about things.
All the time.
When you're so accessible, that's like, that's the, that's the pro and the con, you're there, you're among them.
Right, and and we're not trying to make life difficult, all we're trying to do is make sure that at some point you're going to get a contentious matter. And at some point, someone is going to be ha- unhappy with the decision the council made, and we just want to make sure that there isn't a. Oh, and by the way, I'm unhappy and you violated the open meetings law and we realize that. Oh, oh, you know, we just want, because there are going to be contentious things, if the easy decisions were. You know, those are the ones that are made with, before coming to you, you guys get the hard decision, so we just want to make sure that the public's business is done in the public.
Really appreciate your time.
Yeah, thanks, you guys, that was really helpful.
So everybody, any other questions? I can't even see the clock. So during this work session, thank you guys so much.